As always, we begin by acknowledging the land on which we gather is the territory of the Ottawa and Chipewa peoples who have stewarded this land through the generations. Thank you for your strength and resilience in protecting this land and inspiring us to uphold our responsibilities to do the same. So as we said at the top, this is a unusual joint session, so we are filled with board members up here, so our staff is in the back. Both the planning commission staff and our wonderful deputy city clerk, plus slash city clerk, sorry, will be taking attendance from back there, so everyone know that you have been accounted for. This is a study session, so no action will be taken. We have a list of presenters. There's, the agenda's out front if you have not had a chance to look at it yet, and we will just be moving through that list. So in the idea of time and appreciating every evening, and our second study session of the day for the city commissioners, we will hand this over to Mr. Winters and let him just kick that off.
And just real quick, if I may, I just have a few meeting announcements to make, just general announcements.
I'm sorry, I did skip over the announcements part because this is our second meeting of the day. Sorry, Sean. Gave you a false start.
Announcements for this week, the week of September 8th. I think as many people are aware, the Ninth Street Reconstruction Project and Cape Seal Project started today, and we just extend a thank you to the residents for their patience as we continue to improve the city's infrastructure. The city's Human Rights Commission will host a Know Your Rights Expo that's at the Traverse Area District Library's main branch on Woodmere. That's this Friday, September 12th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And then the Traverse City Arts Commission is hosting its first ever mural festival beginning this Friday, September 12th through September 17th, and that event will take place in the North Boardman Lake District, which with multiple murals painted on multiple buildings, several art exhibitions, and more activities planned. And then I just wanted to thank the city commission and the senior staff at the city and the members of the public and city commission candidates for attending the study session earlier today at 3:30 on our initial discussion on developing objectives and key results. I thought it was a great discussion, and I'm looking forward to the work ahead, and that's all that I've got.
Thank you, and thank you for that, because I was also going to, I forgot to mention that that was recorded, so people who weren't there in person might not have caught a broadcast of it because it wasn't, but it will be available as a recording in the near future. So now, sorry about that, Sean. I teed you up and then we took it away, so now it's back to you.
That's fine, I don't actually have much to say today. Again, just good evening, Sean Winter, city planning director. Thank you for participating in tonight's joint session of the city commission and planning commission on the topic of housing. We have a number of presenters in our program today, so we're going to kind of let them just roll through. We've kind of asked them to stay to about 15 minutes each with five minutes of questions for you all, with the exception of Liz Keegan, who will be our first speaker, because Liz is joining us from the Fair Housing Center of West Michigan. We are required to abide by the rules of the Fair Housing Act, so the Federal Fair Housing Act, actually, and as a CDBG recipient, we're required to have this training. So she'll be providing that. After Liz, we'll be moving to Tony Lenti from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, who will be discussing some of the work that his agency has been doing throughout the state, as well as some new programs that they've launched that can help address housing here in the community. We have Sarah Lucas joining after that. She is the executive director of the Office of Rural Prosperity, a fairly new agency within the state that advocates and supports communities in the rural parts of the states such as ours. Then we'll be joined with Susan Lighthouser-Yee of Housing North, who will be providing an overview on the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone, which is a piece of legislation that got amended and signed into law in 2023 to help address the housing issues throughout the state. And then lastly, we'll have Lauren Tribblelock, the city attorney, talking about the Attainable Housing Facilities Act and the Residential Housing Facilities Act, and how they may address some of the issues that we are working with as well. So one of the objectives we'd like to have at coming out of this meeting tonight is a discussion from the two bodies about what direction you would like to go with these tools that the state has enabled for us to use to address this issue. And part of that is because some of these tools to implement will take a multidisciplinary approach from staff, will have to write the necessary ordinances, establish some districts, as you'll learn, set public hearings, and bring them to a vote. So in order to begin that coordination, we're just asking that the bodies be able to provide some direction of what they may be willing to support. No commitments at this time, but we just haven't had this opportunity since those new pieces of legislation were signed into law. So with that, I will turn it over to Liz Keegan. She, again, is up from Grand Rapids, joining us from the Fair Housing Center of West Michigan. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you, Sean. Good evening, everyone. Hopefully you can hear me okay. I brought a lot of information with me, as I always do. We are very excited to be active and partner with the city of Traverse City, so I'll move quickly through my slides, and I do have a little bit of time at the end of my chunk of time for questions, so I look forward to those if you have any. If we don't get to any, my contact information is available, and we just really encourage any of you to reach out with any questions that you think the Fair Housing Center can assist with, so. So I'll briefly talk about our center, what we do. I'll give an overview of what groups are protected under fair housing laws and why this all matters. I was asked to touch on history, but I'll really try to lean on some case examples to really illustrate where we can contribute to the conversation that's happening tonight, and how the laws can be applied, and some of the resources that we have. We have a lot of available resources on our website, but I'm also happy to kind of send things directly to you if you have questions. So with that said, we'll dive in. We are a private nonprofit organization, so we don't have enforcement authority. We're a traditional nonprofit in that sense. We do not have attorneys, so therefore, nothing that I'm saying tonight is legal advice, since I am not an attorney that follows. And we're really hoping to provide just kind of a high-level overview of fair housing in a time where we're facing a record shortage, of course, of housing. There's a lot of conversations happening about housing, and so we're looking to uphold fair housing within that housing development ongoing conversation. Our mission is really focusing on prevention, housing discrimination wherever we can. It's much easier to prevent it and help manage risk on the front end versus trying to undo the harm of an individual experiencing discrimination or taking the time, expense, et cetera, to respond to a housing discrimination complaint. So we really emphasize education first. So here's a list of all the things that we don't do, which really I hope brings home the fact that we only do fair housing. It's a rare luxury for a nonprofit, but believe me, we have enough to do and that we only do for housing work. We've got a great team of 10 folks and have lots of resources within that network to hopefully help share. If you're looking for resources, you know, we've, we've worked with a number of the groups that are here tonight. We try to make the best referrals that we can. If there's anything you want me to take home, please let me know, because I know there's tremendous agencies doing a lot of this work already, you know, but I think it's tough when your name is Fair Housing Center. That invites a lot of questions and a lot of things that are happening that might be unfair but aren't illegal or not addressed by civil rights law. So that's one of the challenges we're up against. So what we do do is focus on unlawful discrimination, which is based on protected classes that exist at the federal, state, and local level. And so I'll, I'll review what those are, but really what I want you to think about is it's about who? Who is protected? So that's really one of our first questions as we're considering whether or not something is a fair housing issue. We ask ourselves that immediately in-house. Who's protected? And then what is the transaction in the housing world that we're looking at? Is it a rental, sale, loan, insurance, et cetera? And really, that's how we can kind of help decide, are we in the fair housing world? And do we need to provide best practices, resources, et cetera? Fair housing laws do cover land use and zoning, which I'll talk more about in detail, but essentially, we're following federal, state, and local law. So the list of protected classes has grown, and especially here in the state of Michigan, has grown significantly. I started part-time in fair housing in 2001, and for a long time, this slide did not change. But we've had a lot of changes in the last few years, and so it's important to acknowledge that more groups do have protections under fair housing laws. And so we want to consider, are they being included in the work that we're all doing as we think about providing housing for all, who has access to housing and who might be left out? So this is kind of the tiers of the groups. It's race, color, meaning skin color, religion, national origin, sex, physical or mental disability. Family status is basically somebody under the age of 18 living there, families with children. They are a protected class that people often aren't aware of. Here in Michigan, we have whether or not somebody is married or their marital status, their age, with kind of the exemption for senior housing. If it's 55 and older and 62 and older, that's allowed under federal law. We also have race with a new definition that includes hair texture and hairstyle, and we have sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression added very recently. And the newest this year, as of April 2025, is a limited source of income protection only in rental housing and only for landlords that own five or more units in the state of Michigan. Clear as mud? Yes. Okay, so remember, I started with, let us know when you have questions. We know this is complicated. We know there can be a lot of gray areas under fair housing, and boy, with this brand-new law, there's a lot of questions that we have and you may have as well. So if you're hearing from folks who want more information, feel free to send them our way. Traverse City has had a local ordinance for many years, so height, weight, sexual orientation, gender identity have been protected here for a while. The height and weight issue is often kind of rolled in with the other groups, like accommodations, employment, that are protected under civil rights law. We have only had a handful of calls about height or weight in housing discrimination, but the protections exist. And as Sean said, we want you all to be informed, so if you're wondering how those are there, that is why those are there. So very briefly, on the source of income protections, this has been a very, a moving target, a long-time conversation with housing advocates of how can we encourage housing providers to be willing to rent to people who don't have a paycheck every other week? There's all sorts of legal income that's available to people, whether they're retired, whether they have disability income, whether they have assets, they're living off of interest of a beautiful bank account somewhere. You know, there's all kinds of other ways that people do have income that can help them qualify for housing. A big one, of course, is vouchers, housing choice vouchers, vouchers for veterans, commonly known back in the day, the housing choice vouchers were Section 8 vouchers. And so there was a, gosh, multi-year process of, of can we expand source of income protections across the state to encourage housing providers to accept non-employment, legal income, and from an ongoing basis? And so that is now one of our new protections for most landlords, but not all. Really depends on how many properties they own. There's also an encouragement for any housing agencies that are working with vouchers to move quickly, to move within a 30-day window, so that the process of leasing out a unit doesn't get held up. So very quickly, some of the prohibited behaviors, if you, if their person is a covered landlord is really, they shouldn't be treated any differently because of where their income is coming from, their source of income. Note that it's not amount of income. They still need to make the amount in order to qualify. That's something that people can get confused by. But essentially, any difference in treatment, any discouragement, any denial or termination of an existing lease, treating them differently, or misrepresenting availability of units, that would all be potentially violations of these new ordinances, as would any ads or statements kind of saying, we don't accept Section 8, again, if it's a covered landlord. So we are going to be doing hopefully a lot of more education about this. We're working with Misha on some grant funds to do some training, so we'll have a lot more coming out about this, but wanted to make sure that was on everybody's radar as a new protection. So kind of back to our conversation tonight, how does the Fair Housing Act impact zoning and land use? Well, fair housing laws that I talked about, all those layers, cover dwellings, which is very broadly defined. This is something common under fair housing laws. There's broad definitions of certain terms, and dwelling is one of them, because not only does it include buildings and structures or even portions thereof, but empty land, vacant land, that's intended to be used for residential structures is covered as well. Any decision related to developing or using that land should comply with fair housing laws based across all of the layers of law that we have, and really goes back to, you know, it shouldn't be a decision based on who the prospective residents or tenants might be. Why does all of this matter? This is a whole topic I could keep you here forever, but since this is study session number two for some of you, and I'm only the first speaker, I won't do that to you. I like this little graphic here, because it shows the equal housing opportunity logo, and really with how our communities have developed, where you live really impacts what access you have to things like transportation, education, healthcare. Do you have a bike trail, a park, a grocery store with, you know, good green groceries? Do you have the ability to get a job or get transportation to that job? That's all tied to where we live. And so upholding housing choice, for people to choose where they live free from discrimination, we believe builds strong communities, makes communities welcoming, and makes them sustainable for years to come. If you enjoy kind of going down wormholes, this won't be animated, and I apologize for that, but there are some really interesting tools out there that you can actually figure out if you plug in your zip code, or even in this website, your address, it will tell you what your life expectancy is. So we're better understanding truly how that difference can be. I've seen up to a 10-year difference when I've plugged in different addresses. Don't do this until you have time, because you will start going through your history of where did I live and where am I going to plug in those addresses? And, you know, I've seen up to a 10-year difference within a four-mile radius when I've plugged in numbers from different neighborhoods. So it really does matter where we live. How did we get here? Well, there's been a lot of policy, a lot of law, that was really based on separating people, especially segregating populations by race, and often it was required. For example, realtors who would try to integrate neighborhoods could be punished back in the day if they were trying to be affirmative and allow for home sales across race. They could lose their livelihoods. So we've got a legacy to overcome, starting with some of the government policies, which include restrictive covenants. This is an example from the Seattle area in 1930s to 1944. This was put in place to restrict any persons not of the white or Caucasian race, except for those who were a domestic servant employed by a white person. Those folks were allowed on that property. So when I gave a presentation to a historical society, one of the members dug up covenant for where I live in Kent County, which is where Grand Rapids is, and said, I found one, I found one! And they went, I shouldn't be that excited. And I said, no, that's helpful. You know, we need to see this where we live, and again, we have a limitation here, refusing ownership or occupancy of the premise for anyone who has a perceptible strain of Negro blood, using the language of the time. So that is one of the ways that kind of withheld housing opportunity. A lot more folks might be familiar with the term redlining. So that's a map here of the United States of the 236 communities that were large enough at the time in the 1930s that kind of the study was done of where are we going to make loans, what's a safe neighborhood to make an investment in? I'm paraphrasing a lot here in the interest of time, but you know, there were only, you know, a couple hundred communities that were actually mapped in this way. You can see heavily towards the east and quite a few in Michigan, but not in the northern part of Michigan, because we simply didn't have the population at the time to be mapped. But I think we can think about those restrictive covenants and those restrictive deeds, and then also look at these communities that were redlined. The different rings and colors and the dots, if you can kind of see them clearly, can show the predominance of how much of the community was kind of graded with red, which was a failing grade, which is where the term redlining comes from. Yellow was a C grade, which depended on your parents, on if that was an acceptable grade or not, and then As and Bs were blues and greens. Grand Rapids, which has exploded in the time that I've lived there, I'm originally from Detroit on the east side, 80% of Grand Rapids received a failing score on the map. And now I think you'd be hard-pressed to find a neighborhood that isn't experiencing that housing push and crunch and conversation. So some communities have been able to overcome this legacy, but certainly not all. This was an interesting study. This was done in Muncie. There was a, this was a pretty cool county employee who was really good at GIS mapping, was able to get maps or mapped, got all the addresses and mapped all of the neighborhoods that had restrictive covenants based on race, and overlaid it with data from the 2010 census. So it's the percent of non-white residents layered with those restrictive covenants, and you can see, you know, almost 80 years later, however many years later, a lot of those neighborhoods have not integrated. So that history is still in play, and it's something actually Michigan has tried to do some workaround in 2022, a law passed that helped people kind of strike these racially restrictive covenants, because they'll still pop up. They're still attached. It's expensive and time-consuming to remove them, so every once in a while in the national media, you'll see a story of a young family of color or someone who bought a home and found out, oh, I'm legally not allowed to own this, this feels very strange. Am I safe here? Am I welcome here? Was this a good investment? I just leveraged my money and future to purchase this property, right? So, so we have some of that legacy to overcome. This is a really interesting and brief history of zoning codes and how we started kind of legislating who lives where in the United States. And short story, I highly recommend it. It's not, it's not complicated, it's really fascinating, and gives us kind of the idea of when did this come about? Early 1900s? And really, it was looking at where can people have light and air access in big cities like New York? But also, there was an underlying tension out on the west coast, for example, they were trying to remove laundries that were traditionally operated by Chinese people into other neighborhoods. So kind of with the practical part of planning, there's always kind of a layer of, is this possibly discrimination based on any of the protected classes? So, you know, you'll kind of see that history is there simultaneously. What are the intersections? There's many. And so kind of on the one side, I listed some of the protected classes where there's a direct connection, and maybe that's kind of easier to get your arms around to think about first, with building homes, thinking about accessibility and visitability for people with disabilities. There's very basic, seven very basic standards under federal fair housing laws, there's a lot more out there, about establishing basic access in multifamily buildings built after certain sets of years. I won't get into the details, but the other option is where do we build projects that are designed to house people with disabilities? So an example of that is, you know, group homes, people with disabilities seeking to live together. This is a very common example of an opportunity to allow a non-traditional, slightly non-traditional use of a home for a group that is living together and acting like a family to be able to live out in the community. Familial status, those families with children, again, that's questions about how many people can live together safely, how many people can occupy a space together safely. And also, we see violations in who is defined to be a family in, in local ordinances and codes. Sometimes it doesn't align with the definition at the federal level. So anytime we can find that proactively or it's brought to us, we've been able to do a little education and say, hey, we recommend getting this updated. Sometimes we'll see limitations of blood, marriage, and adoption. Well, families are formed in a lot of different ways, and is it broad enough to encompass how families come together modern, in modern life? So those are opportunities that we've been able to kind of do some education and get the, the correct definition on the books. I mentioned land use, planning and zoning, we'll talk more about that, but it could be public services and infrastructure. If I have time, I'll talk about a case where a black neighborhood was denied use of public water for over 50 years. Code enforcement, is it being enforced equally across the board? The development of affordable housing, this can always raise questions about location of where that housing is, and sometimes gets met with the NIMBYism or not in my backyard attitude, that I also have a little bit more information to share on. Stay with me, we're doing all right. I warned you it was going to be a lot. So a couple of practical examples, all right? So this is a situation where the Home Builders Association came to us in a bit of a panic, because the township was considering building moratorium on ranches, by levels and tri-levels, many of those which were in progress or planned. This is traditionally entry-level housing for young people, families with children, it's very sought after for people also who are looking for, you know, making minimal changes in order to access a home to live there for the rest of their lives, or if they have a current disability, disability. And so this was something, after a little conversation and some investigation, it was, it was pretty intentional to keep out people in those groups. And when we kind of raised the fair housing laws and, and had some conversation back and forth and advocated with the home builders, we were able to get this moratorium struck. And so the projects were able to be continued. But it was, it was a little bit of some folks really not understanding that when they made it about those groups of people, that they were intentionally closing the door to their community. One of the questions that we were able to raise was, so you don't want your children and your grandchildren to have access to this community, because that's part of this buying public that could be left behind by a decision like this. Oh, no, that's not what we meant. But then we learned what they really meant, so. Porches, this was a, an idea brought to us, I think it was a disability advocacy group was hearing about a requirement for porches with stoops and stairs to be built on the front of every home in an entire subdivision. And so we had some conversation with kind of all parties and kind of shared that that really makes it much more expensive to make any entrance accessible, make it easier for anyone who would want to age in place there. And it was, it was a great conversation in the end, because there were actually families with children who were like, I also don't want eight steps up to the front of my porch, and so, but the thinking had purely been about community. Like if we have porches on the front of our homes, people will spend time out there and will build community. And so I absolutely understand the thinking behind that. I grew up in a neighborhood that was like that, and so I certainly understand the thinking behind that design, but you have to do kind of that full test of who might be left out or what barriers might we intentionally be creating. So for NIMBYism, I mentioned that briefly. Couple of examples here, we had an elected official during a meeting such as this, making very negative comments, I didn't want to even recreate them, about a proposed housing development for people with disabilities. They were really offensive and uninformed comments that were on the record. The developer, who's a nonprofit developer, looped us into that conversation, we provided some education, and were able to help with that situation. Another one was a proposed expansion of a very large apartment complex. We're talking hundreds of units, they were going to build more, and there was a lot of contention, there was a lot of, I think, bad information being shared around, and so we came in and spoke, just kind of like we are tonight, about what the law is and what legitimate concerns can be raised in, in line with fair housing, and where kind of the areas were that they could not consider in this type of proposed development. So that education and kind of that partnership, I think, has been helpful in these situations. For opposition to housing, you know, we see it a lot. It's all about who, who's going to live there, and that can be used in a very promotional, positive way of, you know, we know we're short in this community for housing for this group, but we often see it as a barrier for affordable housing, supportive housing, transitional housing, things like that can really raise some of these issues. So anytime that sort of project is happening, we've seen it create challenges that can violate fair housing laws or just promote challenges to moving the project forward. So we're really committed to trying to do that education as much as we can. We have a whole set of series and free training videos available on our website. We've created some new materials, some of which you've got in front of you now, to help educate both the housing industry, but also members of the community of, you know, what fair housing obligations and responsibilities are for both parties, and what violations may look like to help people understand and strike that balance. So oftentimes, a lot of the concerns raised are not based in fact, and so it can provide that avenue for housing discrimination, and so we really want to make sure that all of you understand those obligations and that you know that we're a resource, so that we can help provide the education and/or the enforcement, if need be, to make sure that people aren't being excluded based on protected classes under the law. I'm moving a little bit quickly, but I think I'm doing okay. So when these decisions are based on who, and this is something that we've seen quite a bit of, one of the, the fact sheets that we developed recently was kind of on the whole workforce housing idea. There's a big push to house workers, and we absolutely understand that. We know there's a need that can be backed up with a lot of data and factual information, which is important, but we also want to make sure that there's consideration for people who are no longer working or who have a disability, and those, again, are protected groups under the fair housing laws. So we want to make sure that that conversation is happening in an affirmative way. So we encourage, you know, fears not to be basis, and we also want to make sure that any zoning ordinances, any revisions or updates are inclusive of fair housing language. That's something that we have assisted municipal governments with before, kind of looking at best practices or sharing language that we feel is in good compliance. We can't draft that, but we can certainly review that and partner with you all. And then, of course, we would encourage that any ordinances be enforced equally and not against any particular members of any protected class. Sometimes, as I mentioned, we see some overtly biased statements, and so, you know, that makes it a little bit easier to say, wait a minute, this might be a fair housing issue. And sometimes it's more coded or it's, it's not as forthcoming. And so we really want to make sure to watch and check for that and see if we can provide that education to make sure that people are aware. You know, there are fair concerns that people can have. There can be conversations, of course, about traffic and parking and infrastructure, whether it's there or it's proposed, the project design, the costs, you know, those are all concerns that the community should and will be engaged in, but again, we want to make sure that it's not selectively raised or disproportionately influencing what happens or the outcomes. So there's all kinds of language that can be used as well to kind of, I've got examples here. You know, neighbors may raise concerns even after the developer has tried to address them, even after information has been provided. So at that point, it's important to really pay attention. These concerns can delay or block projects, they can discourage other development, and we certainly don't want to see that happen. So that's why we kind of did a second series of, this is what it looks like from the community side, of how you can be a supportive of, of housing and understand what a government can and cannot do, for example. So they absolutely have the right to learn about new housing, and they have the right to speak for or against it as residents and neighbors. They have the right to file lawsuits. They don't have the right to block construction or trespass or try to halt the development of anything. So, you know, we're trying to kind of get that information out there to help folks understand. There are so many costs, and there's so many implications when discrimination interferes with housing development and housing choice. So, you know, I think some of the hardest things are, you know, where we just, so many communities- communities are working so hard to make it easier to develop housing. And we really want to uphold that and understand that that's critical to moving the needle. So we don't want fair housing and housing discrimination to be a part of where that doesn't happen. It would kind of perpetuate what we have, which is, you know, leaving people out. So we don't want to see that. Okay. Quickly, zoning decisions should not be based on who, right? The residents or potential residents, neighbors' fears that the dwelling might be occupied by groups that are protected. You can't treat transitional housing, supportive housing, group homes, or any other group or any protection that's going to live in the housing any differently. And again, maintain that equal enforcement of any ordinances and watching for a disproportionate harm to a protected class. So is anybody going to be treated differently, left out? Is it going to be harder for them to access housing? If they are a protected class, let's do a risk analysis, let's figure out if there's a different way that we can achieve the end and remove the risk of a fair housing violation. Those are conversations that we love to have on the early end. There are so many people having conversations about meeting different needs of different populations in the housing market. And it's, we like to be involved as soon as possible so that we can kind of help provide guidance. So this was a case I mentioned, but I, I'm happy to send this information. But essentially, there was a, a neighborhood that had been asking for more than 50 years through public meetings, had paid deposits, had been advocating to get access to public water in Ohio. The water line on the map here is where the blue lines are. And the coal-run neighborhood, you can see where the blue lines stop. All of the homes where all of the black residents lived were south there. And there, it was just, there was no way the city could show that this wasn't intentionally discriminatory. So there's a great video and a great series of maps to kind of show that case. If you're interested, I'd be happy to share that with you. Okay, so I know that was a lot. We have a couple minutes for questions. So I will kind of turn the mics back over to anyone who has questions.
Two questions. One, if there isn't explicit discriminatory statements, how can you prove discriminatory intent, especially in an area like this, which is a very competitive housing market, where a house can go to somebody else for significantly more?
Yeah, it can be very challenging, like in a one-on-one sale situation, it can be very challenging. We have an enforcement program, we have volunteers that we train to go out and kind of do a testing program for us. It's kind of like the secret shopping idea. So for the transactions, we can kind of test the market that way. It's very challenging, though, when things go very quickly, which still happens to be the case. And so we've, we've kind of developed our strategies to do the best we can to figure it out. But a lot of it kind of comes to people who know what's happening, bring it to us, you know? And we do our best to investigate and or bring in a partner, because I said, we're not an enforcement authority, so we can't do the investigations ourselves. But we work with the Department of Civil Rights, we work the HUD, work with the courts to do the best we can to establish, investigate and establish what happened. So are there other properties, you know, maybe that that real estate professional is listing? And how are people being treated at those properties? There's some things that we can do. It can come down to somebody's word. So, yeah, it can be very challenging.
And something I've seen in other communities, largely college towns, is regulations on how many non-related people can be in a single unit, basically saying there might be a prohibition against discriminating against college students, but if you word it slightly differently, you can have something that has a disproportionate impact on a specific group.
Absolutely, yeah. So we've seen communities that had no more than four unrelated or no more than six unrelated individuals residing together, those are pretty common. Those are not in the areas where students are protected. Ann Arbor, Ypsilanti, East Lansing, they have students as protected groups. So it's striking a balance between what existing ordinances there are. It may be age discrimination that we may be able to look at it. But if it's a uniform policy that's really looking at the occupancy of how many people are living together and it's not going below, kind of what would a reasonable occupancy standard would be typically with those types of ordinances, it's not going to be a fair housing issue.
Thank you.
But we're happy to take a look at the unique facts because that matters. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
So regarding zoning, I can think of a couple of projects that were like multiple, multiple-family housing projects. And it's often, it's, or it's not uncommon that there are concerns raised to neighbors about density of the project that's too dense for the neighborhood. Any project that's large is pretty common. Can you give us some guidance on, in the cases I can think of, we approved the project, so it wasn't our concern? But if we did feel there was a density issue, or how do we, where do we draw that? What's the guidance on drawing that line?
That's a great question. And I think we would kind of look at the, you know, the, what's the need behind that project? Who, how is it set up? It's, it's kind of hard to answer kind of hypotheticals, but there's a few things that we would want to look at. From a fair housing perspective, we don't want to see occupancy limits that are lower than what's allowed. And that's typically what people are looking for. So you've heard the two people per bedroom kind of rule of thumb that's been in place for a long time. We don't build like that anymore. We have lofts and multi-levels and all kinds of different open spaces that actually allow for more occupancy, which probably raises a lot more of those questions. So from a fair housing standpoint, we would just want to see that it's not restricted that would get, you know, get the project in trouble from a fair housing perspective. And that may be the argument to say, you know, we can't go lower than XYZ because of the square footage, because of the number of bedrooms, you know, there's a reasonable limit. We don't want overcrowding. You know, we don't want people, you know, living in spaces that aren't meant for human habitation. There's, you know, there's steps that we can take to make sure that the occupancy standards are reasonable, allow for larger families, multi-generational families. It's, it's kind of hitting that balance. So I think we would maybe be able to do some education, but it'd be helpful to, you know, if there's specific projects, we could look at the facts, so.
Thank you.
Great question.
Other questions for Liz?
I had a quick one, and I know we do have an in-house attorney, but since you're here. The, you know, you mentioned the different protected classes. When we see things like executive orders or other things being put out that sometimes target certain classes, so it's coming from the federal level.
Yes.
But as you pointed out, we have certain protections locally. How does that work for superseding? So if we say, you know, and let's say a landlord wants to get some, kick someone out based on sexual orientation, which is a protected one, class here in Traverse City.
And at the state of Michigan now.
And in the state of, that's true, because of Elliott Larson expansion.
Yes.
But let's just, you know, I'm just using that off the top of the head.
Yep.
But the federal government is saying, no, you can do that now. Where does that kind of, how does that hash out usually?
We are answering those questions literally day by day.
Sorry to, sorry to traumatize you.
And we had that conversation before the meeting started too of, you know, we, we want to look at everything that's current. We do have a national advocacy network looking at these questions under fair housing of, you know, what can we do? And typically, we're going to want to know, same thing with the, the question about occupancy, like where are the funds coming from? It's, it's part of that risk assessment. You know, what can we point to or what, you know, what can we point to to rely on? Is that going to stand up to the executive order? Is there something else? You know, we're, we're literally working that out day by day. And so we encourage those questions to come to us. We may not have the answers right away, but we're looking at that all the time.
Thank you for that answer, as you're in the midst of fighting it. Other questions from anyone? Okay, well, thank you so much, Liz, and I know you'll be around later, just in case, till the, till we send you back to Grand Rapids.
And then I think I have so many.
We'll have Tony come up now, yeah.
Thank you. It's good to see so many people that I know. And for those of you who don't know me, my name is Tony Lenti. I'm the Chief Housing Investment Officer at MISTHA. That is a position, I have three divisions that report to me. Rental Development, which is large-scale development, all our tax credit programs and some of our newer programs. Neighborhood Development, which is our, my neighborhood, CDBG division, it's much smaller scale projects. And then Asset Management. So anything that has, MISTHA has an interest in through loans or grants goes to Asset Management, and that also reports to me. I used to work here in the city, I still live here. This is my home. And when I told my family I was going to go to the state about two and a half years ago, they said, well, what's going to be different about that job? And I said, well, I used to get yelled at locally, now I get yelled at statewide. And that's about it. But I exaggerate slightly, but a lot of people still, you know, try to make their case. And it's nice when a friendly face does show up to argue with me about some, something. Right, John? That's right. But I'm glad to be here and I'm always willing to help you guys as you try to figure out, you know, direction, planning and figure out what the state's going to do and how you can align your goals with our goals. So always happy to be here. You know, in 2024, we had a, a great year for investment in housing. It was most productive year ever. We put out 2.2, almost $2.2 billion. In '23, we did 1.2 billion. And then 2022, we did 756 million. Part of that acceleration was some of the federal stimulus money that was flowing through the state. And even here, we were able to get a lot of extra projects done. We're still working through that. So in 2024, we had about 12,425 units. And as you can see from this slide, we break it down by homeownership, multifamily rental, our missing middle housing program, which was of a lot of interest, had $110 million. We did 50 projects, a couple are in the northwest part of the state, and created about 1,400, almost 1,500 new homes. We still, MISTHA is a public housing authority in its self, in of itself, and we have about almost 31,000 vouchers that we have out on the street around the state of Michigan. We also created in 2024 our Tax Increment Financing for Housing Program, our Housing TIF, that was passed during that summer and we got it out and moving. We have 38 plans that we have approved. These are Brownfield plans that just do housing so far. We're about ready to do 39 of 40 very soon. We have a, you know, a housing crisis, you all know that, you feel it here, but across the state, it's anywhere you go, it's really no different. It might have a different cause and effects from various issues in different parts of the state, but largely it's the same way. I just wanted to read a couple of facts to you, just to refresh, you know, why we do at MISTHA, what we, what we work on and what drives us. In 1991, the median age for first-time homebuyers was 28, and now it's 38. And that's according to the National Association of Realtors. In 1981, the median house, the median age of all homebuyers was 36. Today, it's 56. In Michigan, over half of renters spend over a third of their income on housing. And between 2012 and 2022, the average home price doubled, it increased 100%, while our income increased only about 40%. You know, these are unsustainable positions that we hold in this state. We're trying to work on policies and programs to correct that, but it is getting more and more dire every day. And this last stat is one that I think you might appreciate, and it's really starting to be a bigger concern for us, and we're starting to address this on a statewide level. But 53% of all our homes in Michigan are over 50 years old. My home that I have here in Traverse City was built in the 60s, so it is right there at that 50-year mark. And it, it is a chore to maintain. You know, imagine you're on a fixed or limited income and, you know, something major happens that can really, you know, reverse your economic well-being. You know, if you have to put an emergency roof on or, or water heater or air conditioning furnace or something to that effect. 50-year-old home stock is a problem, and we're going to try to do some things about that. We have a statewide housing plan and your region, I think it's Region D, is that correct? Is that what this region is? 10 counties largely mirrors Housing North's footprint as well. It was a five-year goal to produce or preserve 75,000 housing units. We increased that by order of the governor and mayor of 2024 to 115,000. You can find it there, but that's been our direction going forward. Quarterly progress reports are on that website, so you can check out how your region is doing and how we're responding to the regional needs. We have programs in place that respond to each and every region in the state of Michigan. These are the housing partners, you can see, oh, I guess I should have gone to the next slide and see D right there. D and E is, is the north part of the state, they're very different from each other. You know, D is highly competitive in all the resources we put out to this region. E still has money left in their, in their region. So you can tell that even though we're trying to have a response to every, to every region, they respond back to us very differently. It's like who has the capacity to build, who has the markets to build and what have you. But we divided the UP up into three different divisions or regions, and that's helped out quite a bit as well. So they used to fight over one pot of money. And I think that, from those of you who care about rural issues, this was a positive response for MISTHA to do that. I'm going to go over a couple of our resources because that's what I was asked to do, but I'll be happy to answer any questions about, just about anything that's MISTHA-related. My neighborhood is something we, we did in response to the statewide housing plan. And it's a low-barrier, common application. So we have a lot of new developers coming to that, to that program. We see 2 million or less investments in each of the deals and sometimes even smaller. Sometimes people are doing two, three homes and doing their own renovations on the, on a portfolio of rental homes that they own. And we think it's been rather successful. Since April 1st, 2024, we put 120 million into the program. And we are seeing a lot of those come online now. It's open to local governments as well as for-profit and nonprofit developers. So keep that in mind. Employer Assisted Housing Fund, this was actually announced here in this community by the governor about a year ago. We have it, you know, in play. What, what drove us to do this is hearing from all the HR directors around the state who, you know, would jokingly say, I went to college to be human, a human resource professional. I can't believe I have to check, you know, rental ads every day. That's my job. But they did not study that in school, obviously. Michigan is adding just one new home for every 14 new jobs that we've created in this state. And we are one of the worst cases in this stat across the country. So we knew we had some work to do to try to match where housing is and where jobs are going. The new $10 million pilot fund is a dollar-for-dollar match to employers to do work in this area. We thought there'd be a number of developers who, or employers who'd work with developers to build housing, but we're seeing much more program-related activity. The one successful application from this region was Munson Hospital. And they are doing a rental assistance program for newly-minted nurses to move to this region and help them afford their local rents. And I think they're going to have a two-year program. They're still working out the details, but they're going to get their grant agreement very soon and hopefully start working on this. Rental housing must remain affordable for at least 10 years and for-sale housing must be, if you're actually building it, for-sale housing for five years. Employers can contribute cash, cash equivalents or land or land equivalents to the deal and we will match it, up to $2 million for development, $500,000 for a program. Housing TIF has been much more successful than we ever thought. We, we hurried through and got this program up and running pretty quickly after the governor signed the law. And then it just sat there for a while and no one came forward. Then it just kind of rolled in very quickly. I think people were waiting for one to go through and then it got denied, it was wrong. So then we quickly got it, you know, resubmitted and we, we, we don't have a lot of problems with people submitting their applications to us anymore once they learned what this was all about. It's a new funding stream to subsidize development, and it goes up to 120% of area median income. It is for rental housing or for-sale housing. It, it just depends on, you know, what you want to do. But the rental development does generate more TIF dollars than for-sale housing. We do have technical assistance if you have questions about that. And we do have a $20 million loan fund that was approved by our board when we rolled out this program. What we're trying to do, the TIF revenue stream is assignable. And if you borrow against that, you assign that to us for a period of time to pay it back. We're trying to prove the market on this. Previous lending institutions who've operated in this area have largely, I believe, done it as a courtesy product to their long-term customers. it as a courtesy product to their long-term customers, the developers, and they were offering like 50 cents on the dollar. We are at 75, 80 cents on the dollar, which is generating more money. We're trying to demonstrate this is a, this is a safe investment. The, as you can imagine, for those of you who know how housing works, it is, there is a veil, you know, like year 15 through year 20, where you don't know what your property is going to be like. How much money are you going to need to reinvest in it, you know, whatever it might be, upgrade, refresh? And you can, you can understand why some lenders don't want to, you know, count on taxes paid to be the revenue to pay back a loan. So we think it's still a safe investment, so we're trying to help with that whole conversation and we hope to see some financial institutions following our suit and getting into that market and offering something, you know, 70 to 80 cents on the dollar for those things. I would say that one thing you do have to be tied to a local plan, housing plan, when you do apply for Housing TIF, that is one thing we did put into the, we did put into the rules. And that's not hard to do in regions like this where you have so many plans in place. You just have to be able to tie to one of these plans. We do now, after our board meeting last month into August, middle of August, have the accelerator fund. You know, this is a housing finance program that's going to take a, we're putting a mezzanine layer into the capital stack that'll come out after five years. By doing that, you don't have to borrow as much under construction, during the construction time, which is cheaper money. That's some of the most expensive money you can borrow. And then MISTHA is taken out by a long-term patient lender. We have a partner lined up to do that. We do think, what's interesting about this is that we're going to have a new class of developers, you know, who were more interested in like our missing middle programs, who are coming here. They were doing almost market rate, but we're offering them, you know, if they're doing, like I think the example I used in the board meeting was 190 unit and we are basically investing in this deal to make it happen. Our money does make the whole performer work. In exchange for that, we're getting about 60, 62 units of affordable housing at 60 to 80%, even though it's 120% or above market rate kind of projects. That is equivalent to one 9% tax credit deal. So we almost get a whole other tax credit deal by doing one of these deals and the community will get some affordability. They often get a deal moving that wasn't moving because of a number of different, you know, factors and market pressures that kept it on the shelf. Here's just a simple market rate, public development than the traditional affordable. What we're doing is jumping into that revolving loan fund part and replacing, you know, higher cost debt and some of the other state programs. We see this as not competing with our state programs. We see it as totally different, so we can do more new deals with this. We have four deals that we think will be going through this pilot program and the first one might be at our board next month, but we'll have to wait and see. A couple of them want to close by end of the year. We'll see how that's going to work. This is starting to be a trend nationally and I just got off the phone this afternoon with Oregon Housing Authority and they are trying to do a program like this, but you need to get like a pot of money, 20 to 30 million dollars to start it. We were in a good position to launch that, but we're still trying to raise some dollars to make this a much bigger, robust program. What's next for us? We keep asking the legislature for more dollars. Believe it or not, MISTHA didn't receive a lot of state dollars until like five years ago. The Michigan Housing Community Development Fund is about 50 million a year. That is state money. That's how we do the My Neighborhood Program and some other things. But we also want to see some more flexibility in these, in these funds so that we can go up to the 120% AMI marker. We, you know, have a number of programs and a lot of money of that 2.1, 2.2 billion dollars in '24. You know, I would say, you know, 90% went to affordable, extremely low-income, low-income affordable housing, 60% and below. We're just trying to get some flexibility to do a few more units at that 120% because we do think there's a need there. We are about to update the statewide housing plan, the five-year plan, so keep your ears open for that. You want to participate in your local conversations when that starts to happen. We do have this data source. If you want to use our data portal, I wanted to promote that a little bit, so check that out and see what's, you know, going on here and around the state. It just launched over the summer. Questions, comments? Do you expect me to come with bags of money?
Well, nope, sorry, we're keeping it to the commission up here right now and then we'll have public comment later.
You can catch me later, John.
Yeah. Yeah, John, I'm not worried about you having access to Tony. Any other, any questions from up here? All right. I think we all, we know how to find you, Tony, but we'll also find you to ask more questions in the future.
Outstanding, thank you.
So now we'll have Sarah Lucas join us. I'm excited to hear more about the Office of Rural Prosperity, so.
Take it away. Hi, everyone. I'm Sarah Lucas. I'm the Director of the Michigan Office of Rural Prosperity, but like Tony, I know many of you from previous incarnations and work with the city, so it's nice to be able to talk with you about the Office of Rural Prosperity and share a little bit about our programs. I don't have bags of money, I'll say that right off the top, but I, we do have some programs that directly impact housing in Traverse City and elsewhere in the state, so I'll go through those quickly. For those of you who aren't familiar, the Office of Rural Prosperity is about a three-year-old office. The governor created it about three years ago to act as a liaison between rural communities and state government, as well as other partners like federal agencies and philanthropy and universities. So I started about three years ago. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a planner by training and have worked in this region and in the Upper Peninsula for the last 25 years, primarily entirely with rural communities on, on planning and economic development issues, particularly housing. And so when this office was created, it was just one person, now it's eight people and we, we work really hard to stay engaged with rural communities so that we can advocate for their needs within state government and with other partners. We engage really extensively across the state. We have events, we go to meetings like this, we go to meetings like the one that I just left in Kilkaski and talk with communities about what they're experiencing and what their, their needs are. Far and away, housing is, like Tony said, the number one issue that communities are grappling with. It's a really complex issue. There's never enough resources, takes a lot of expertise and it takes a lot of time. And so we often work with communities through some of those problems and I'll talk a little bit about how later on. But we also act as kind of a navigator in addition to the advocacy and liaison role. We try to connect communities with resources. So while we don't have a large budget, we do work with agencies across state government and in federal government. And when we're familiar with programs, we're able to connect communities effectively. So we have, we're sort of a cross-sector agency with a lot of really strong relationships, both within government and with communities themselves. So are always happy to talk with communities about what they're, what they're seeing and experiencing and try to help them through some of their challenges. So when we first kind of set out to develop programming for the office, there was a really big mandate to address issues like housing and infrastructure, transportation, broadband. But without a big budget, we had to really work to understand where we could provide the most value. And it really didn't matter where we went in the state or what the issue was that communities were talking about. We found really consistently that they were struggling with issues related to capacity. And that's a word that I use a lot. It doesn't always mean anything to people or it means everything all at once. So we try to break it down a little bit and I'll, I'll tell kind of how we came into this is, you know, a few years ago, as the office was getting started, there was a lot of new stimulus funding available to communities and a lot of frustration on the part of rural communities that they weren't ready to access it. They didn't have projects lined up, they didn't have grant writers, they weren't sure what they were eligible for. And that really boiled down to, you know, not really having a strong plan or enough staff or procedures in place that allowed them to be competitive when developing projects and applying for funding. And so we, we really tried to focus on those gaps in capacity that communities were experiencing to try to help them get ready for building new housing and addressing their infrastructure challenges. And what we have found is that there are some, like what we're calling building blocks for communities to be ready for this kind of success. And it starts with having the right data, understanding the community's needs, having a vision for what the community wants and having a solid plan for how to get there. And I'll talk, I'll talk more about that later on, but we have seen time and time again that a lot of communities see a housing need and they understand that the solution is housing and so they try right away to build housing. But if they don't have a strong, you know, market study, if they don't have a plan for the community, if the community isn't behind it, it can be really difficult to get that project moving forward. So we really, we really try to emphasize that the communities that are successful in developing housing or addressing other challenges are the ones that are planning and collaborating with partners. And that last part is, again, really critical and I'll talk a little bit more about that. The other big piece that is missing in a lot of rural communities in terms of addressing things like housing is having adequate staff and I guess I would say trained staff with access to the expertise that is needed to make these projects happen. Traverse City is really fortunate that you have, you have a strong planning legacy, you have a strong planning staff and have done a lot of the community conversations that need to happen in order to move these projects forward. But a lot of communities just don't have any paid staff. They have, you know, a part-time clerk or supervisor or whatever and it's, it's hard to do everything all at once. So a lot of what we get help, we get requests for help from communities who don't have any, any planning staff at all. So that, that piece has been really important. We also talk a lot about leadership and governance, having those procedures in place that help you move through some of these really sometimes difficult conversations with the community requires a lot of skill and training and expertise as well as procedures. And, and finally, community engagement and again, collaboration are really critical components of any successful project development, whether it's housing or anything else. You need to understand, again, where the community is on the issue and be, having those conversations regularly to talk through the challenges and the process and like with Liz's training, you know, what some of the, the laws are governing, governing the process. So we, we talk about capacity. We try to put our money where our mouths are on capacity. Our, we have a small grant program, it's called the Rural Readiness Grant Program, where we provide funding to help communities actually develop some of those solutions so that they can be ready for, for housing projects moving forward, not just housing. We really, we, the, the grant program is really flexible. We have funded projects, many projects related to housing, but also behavioral health and emergency response and transportation and infrastructure and everything else. And the reason is that we know that communities understand where they need to invest to build up that readiness and so we try to keep that program flexible. We have, we provide about, we provide $50,000, up to $50,000 for tax-exempt entities in rural communities and that covers costs related to planning, capacity building and partnership development. So if you're, you know, bringing a consultant on or a new staff person to help guide some of these projects, that would be considered capacity building. If you're convening partners and developing projects in collaboration with partners, that would be partnership development. And if you're planning, that's pretty self-explanatory. But we have funded projects in this area, in the Traverse City area, a number of them related to housing. One of our grantees is in the room here, Homestretch, has been a really successful grantee. We talk about them all the time. The Traverse City School District and Interlaken are another great example. And we, we point to these projects often because that small amount of funding that we provided acted as a catalyst that has brought a great deal of additional investment into the community. So really try to emphasize that these, these are small grants, but they're very impactful and we really see the results a couple of years down, down the road. So that's our grant program. Again, it's a very small one. We had 1.5 million dollars to grant last year. We're not sure if we'll have funding next year and I'll talk a little bit about that moving forward, but I know that one question is going to be whether Traverse City is considered rural and it depends on the definition. There are many, many definitions of rural and our approach to it is if you are serving communities that are designated as rural, you can apply for our grant dollars. And if you are considered rural by any state or federal definition, we will consider you eligible for our programs. So Traverse City is in the mix on that. So because we don't have a lot of dollars to grant, we have another program called the Rural Readiness Network where we provide direct assistance to communities for things like partnership development and collaboration and early-phase planning. We work with regions across the state, really kind of focused on developing coordination and collaborative solutions to challenges like housing. So Tony talked a little bit about the differences between Regions D and E and a lot of that, again, comes down to having the plans in place, the capacity there to, to prepare for housing development. In northeast lower Michigan, it's, it's much less populated, there's a lot less capacity, a lot less planning. And so we're more engaged in northeast Michigan in terms of just helping them coordinate with partners and identify, identify more structural solutions there to some of those capacity issues. But we work in southwest Michigan and the UP and the Thumb, trying to help them work through similar, similar challenges in those regions. I'm not going to take a lot more time, I just have a couple more slides and just want to share a little bit about some of the impacts that we've seen in the few years that the office has been around. We have received additional funding from outside of the state to conduct some of our work, particularly the work related to the Rural Readiness Network where we're providing direct support to communities through partners like Resource Rural, which is a national nonprofit, and USDA Rural Development. Really, they both really recognize the need for rural capacities to build up, or rural communities to build up that capacity. And we, we also like to talk about the return on investment from our small grant program. So for every dollar that we've awarded for capacity building projects in rural communities, there's been an additional $12 that's been invested in rural areas. So to date, there's been, we have, we've been administering these grants for about a year and a half and have invested less than $2 million and have seen $22 million invested in rural communities as a direct result of those, those grants. So it really demonstrates the power of those small catalytic grant awards for those foundational activities like planning and capacity building. And then we, we also want to really emphasize that we are statewide and we are, we have our, our hands all over the state. We are, the next couple of months particularly in the Thumb and in southwest Michigan and in the UP and in northeast lower Michigan and have developed some really great relationships across the state with those rural communities. And I have to tell you that, you know, they often ask for examples of what has worked in other communities and I find myself coming back to some of the work that has happened here in Traverse City very often because you have been having these conversations here in the city for much longer than other parts of the state. Some of that is by necessity. I always used to say Traverse City's like Canary and the Coal Mine on housing issues. It hit here harder and earlier than many other parts of the state and so the community has been engaged much longer in some of these solutions. And so you have a lot more experience to draw from and so we are, we are taking advantage of that and sharing those success stories across Michigan. But we are here primarily as a resource and are happy to work with, with the city. We're happy to see the city engaged in these kinds of conversations and looking for opportunities to partner with neighboring communities because again, we really do think that that's critical to success in any of these challenges that rural communities are experiencing. And we are always trying to find ways to sort of develop that collaboration and I mentioned events that, that we host and we coordinate. Right now, we are in the thick of some local events, regional events that we are coordinating in partnership with the Grand Traverse Regional Community Foundation and Interlaken Public Radio. We're hosting a series of events around rural readiness and resiliency. I just left one in Kilkaski. There's one in Benzonia tomorrow and on Wednesday, there's a half-day event at the Hagerty Center here in town where we're talking about trends that are impacting rural Michigan and how communities can be proactive in terms of planning and responding to some of those big changes to things like population and of those big changes to things like population and our economy and land use patterns. So if you haven't signed up, I have the information here online. Housing is always a part of those conversations about readiness and resiliency. It's a foundational part of the, the community's prosperity long-term, and so we're always, we're always integrating housing into all of our conversations. So I will stop here. Happy to answer any questions you might have. And again, we're here as a resource, and so always feel free to reach out with any questions that we might be able to help with.
Do we have any questions for Sarah right now? Okay, looks like you're off the hook. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation on our relatively new office. I appreciate that. Next, we'll have Susan Leithhauser. Come up, please.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, I am excited to talk with you about property tax abatement. That's what you want to hear at this time of evening, I'm sure. And so specific, so Susan Leithhauser with Housing North, and I'm going to be talking about neighborhood enterprise zones. And it's one type of tax abatement, and it's a type of tax abatement that can be used for owner-occupied properties, whereas Lauren will be talking about some types of abatements that can be used for rental or tenant-occupied properties. Just a bit about Housing North. We, our mission is to build awareness, influence policy, and expand capacity so that communities can create housing solutions that meet their unique needs. And again, my role is housing-ready tech support, so I get to talk about wonky stuff like tax abatements. Something important to know about tax abatements is there, various types can be used in the same area. So for instance, the same NEZ abatements are district-based, as our attainable and residential facilities are district-based. They can be the same district, they can be different districts, depends on what the priority is for the, the particular geographic area to be addressed. Neighborhood enterprise zones are not new. They have been around since 1992, so there's a lot of precedent. I can point you to a lot of examples and kind of help you identify, you know, if you want to consider this type of abatement, how would you use it? Where would you use it? What would you consider in establishing a district? The new piece actually is for non-Oprah-qualified municipalities. So I will breeze over that, but, oops. I will primarily focus on the NEZ rehab and NEZ new abatements, because Traverse City is an Oprah-qualified municipality. So this type of tax abatement came about in 1992 with Public Act 147. Just, and this is just to give context. I won't give too big a history lesson, but it was approved in conjunction with Public Act 146, which is the Obsolete Properties Rehabilitation Act. And that provides a clue as to what the intent of these types of abatements were, or are, is to revitalize obsolete or blighted properties. You might also think about just underutilized properties. So the recent amendment kind of expands the program so that non-Oprah-qualified communities can also use, have a different twist on the abatement, which would be for rental properties. So accomplishes a similar thing as to the attainable housing and residential facilities. So again, we'll just breeze over that a bit because it doesn't apply to Traverse City. But NEZ rehab is suitable for owner-occupied or rental housing, and it is used to incentivize adaptive reuse and/or rehabilitation of blighted or obsolete properties. So if you think about a school building that's no longer used, a municipal building that's no longer used, an apartment building that has a boiler system and is in disrepair. A fun fact about me, I lived for a long time in a former aspirin factory, and I still occasionally office in a former fire department maintenance headquarters. So that gives you a sense of the type of properties that might benefit. Both have been converted to, well, a mix of residential and office. The tax calculations differ. The reason, again, this gets a little wonky, but maybe it goes without saying, but I'm going to say it anyway. Property taxes are a function of two variables. We have the millage rate, and we have the taxable value. The way the NEZ rehab works, if I was a developer and I came to and I said, this old school building, I would like to develop it into rental, or I'm, I'm going to want to develop it into condos. The taxable value, the pre-improvement taxable value is essentially frozen for the term of this abatement, which is six to 15 years. So the owner occupants would benefit from that abatement. The NEZ new abatement, again, it could be one district, maybe next to that, maybe you can split off a couple of parcels from that blighted or obsolete property and entice a developer to build some single-family homes there. They could benefit from the NEZ new abatement. It works a little differently. Taxable value, no impact. So if it's a $400,000 home, it's approximately a $200,000 taxable value, but the millage rate that applies is one-half of the state-average millage rate, so that's going to be about 19 mils. And again, it works. So that is very similar to the residential facilities and attainable housing abatement that Lauren will be discussing. NEZ workforce, again, unfortunately not for Traverse City, but that's okay, because we have some other tools. Again, the amendment, I'm going backward. Okay, great. Thank you. Process, again, this has been around for a long time, so the process is well-established. There's a ton of precedent. There's a lot of guidance at the state level. You'll see the abbreviation LGU, that's govern, Local Governmental Unit, that's U, is responsible for designating the zone. Developers seeking a tax abatement must submit their application prior to obtaining construction permits. That's important as far as the timing, otherwise the state may reject it. Approval of the application is required from both the Local Governmental Unit and the State Treasury. The assessor's office must implement a system to monitor tax billing and ensure compliance. Compliance is actually only at the front end. There is no ongoing annual compliance requirement, but still it being out of process for assessor's offices who have not done it before, there would need to be a, a process established there. The boundaries of NEZ zones or other types of, of tax abatement zones could be established in response to a specific request from a developer, or the bodies here might say, boy, we, this area of the city needs some help. It's going through a transition. The housing stock is very old. The commercial property is very old and obsolete. Again, there, the purpose is really to renovate, rehab, adapt properties. So in determining the boundary, you might consider the location of any blighted, obsolete, or underutilized properties. That might even include, even include some big underutilized parking lots. For NEZ rehab, the current value must be pretty low. So a developer can't just say, hey, I want to put a new roof on my property and get this type of abatement. The current value must be less than $120,000 per unit, which for this market's pretty low. There is no limit on the number of zones, but the total NEZ-designated area may not exceed 15% of the city's total acreage. Zones can be revised over years as needs and conditions change. Clearly, there's a benefit to property owners within the zone. What sometimes gets controversial is someone who's just outside the zone may feel that the zone has been drawn in an inequitable way, and that is the challenge of being in government, right? Some examples, the Maple, Maple Block in Traverse City. I believe that that is an adaptive reuse that is using an NEZ rehab abatement. Cadillac Loft, I believe, used NE, either NEZ new or NEZ workforce, or possibly both. This example's from Detroit. That's my, that's one of my old house. And this was, this is the large asset, this was actually the Park Davis facility, so it was a, quite a large complex of brick buildings that had, you know, were vacant for many years. And another thing that possibly goes without saying, but I'm going to say it anyway, it's typically more expensive to adapt and reuse a property than it is to go to a greenfield and build, build housing there. So another example, so an NEZ rehab, whoops, old school converted to residential loft. A little nuance, the tax on land cannot be abated. This kind of gets into how the, this is implemented. So an owner of a, an, an NEZ-abated property is going to receive two tax bills. One represents the land, the other represents the improvements. Another example, this is an example of an NEZ new, new construction property on, it's kind of sandwiched between a expressway and a commercial strip. So the incentive, again, the, the owners, the resident, is going to be the one benefiting from this, and they might not ordinarily be willing to pay what it costs the builder, the developer to build. So the, that tax abatement reduces their operating costs once they're in the house, but it also kind of incentivizes those buyers to pay a price that the developer needs to incentivize them to build, and then their operating costs are lower. And that is all I have for NEZ tax abatements. And I would be thrilled to answer any questions or talk with, about you, about tax abatements with you over coffee. Feel free to throw questions at me.
Does anybody have some less caffeinated questions right now?
Thank you for having the link to the bigger, 689-page document showing all of the examples. But do you know off the top of your head any cases of non-Oprah communities in northern Michigan that have taken advantage?
So the, so that would be the NEZ workforce that the non-Oprah properties can use. I think, you may be aware Frankfurt has used a lot of these different tools. I know that they have used residential facilities and attainable. I'm not sure whether they used workforce. They kind, they, to me, they do the same thing. There are some nuances as to how large the district needs to be, or, but all three of those types are for rental properties that are income-controlled.
Yes. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. So I, I'm just thinking about some of the programs and resources that the county has. We, our Brownfield Authority has a revolving loan fund, and, and I'm also thinking about a project that was, that's underway in East Bay, the Crimson Project. Similar kind of scenario to maybe using an NEZ in, in Traverse City. Could that be paired with, you know, maybe like a, a grant or loan through our Brownfield Authority, or sort of layering these tools together to create affordable housing options?
Great question. So important to remember that there's, there's actually no income qualifier for this, but you might need a little incentive for buyers to buy next to an income-controlled building. So it certainly could be layered in a number of different ways. It certainly could be layered with, you know, some grant funding, yes, especially if it's brownfield. Maybe there's something that is not super desirable yet. So the goal is to make it desirable. Yeah, I don't see any reason why it couldn't be layered with, with grants or loans from the Brownfield Authority.
Great. Good question.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions at this time? Yeah, go ahead. Oh, wait, there's one over there from Sarah.
Could you go to your slide where you showed the different programs? I know Lauren's going to be talking about the other two, but to build off Maxwell's question about stacking financing, which we know is necessary for a lot, you had a good slide in there about how these different programs apply to different scales and how they can be stacked?
So, yeah, so this last segment here, which was NEZ attainable and residential, I mean, most neighborhoods, right, they have some, some rental and some owner-occupied. So you could certainly do a zone if you were to target a zone that you wanted to revitalize. You could certainly have one zone that encompassed all three of these. Does that help?
Yeah.
Sure. And then, you know, depending on the char, you know, there are different grant programs, they have different requirements. There's, I don't know of any reason why they, there couldn't be a number of things combined.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Great introduction. And for our final presentation, we will bring up Lauren Tribbleout, known face up here, to talk about the smaller scale of this.
Here we go. Good evening, everybody. Lauren Tribbleout, I'm the city attorney. And the planning director asked me to tag team on this and talk about two newish acts that came down in 2022 in the same package with the new pilot for housing that we've utilized in Traverse City that you know well. And that is the attainable and the residential housing districts. So I know I'm the only thing standing between you and the rest of your Monday evening, so I'm just going to kind of breeze through these, just so that you know what they accomplish and sort of what the process would be to put them in place. And then, if you're interested in implementing these, which is really the feedback that I think I want to hear and staff wants to hear, then we can work together to bring back that process to you and walk you through it so we can implement some of these. That's what you want to do. So these were two new statutes. The only real difference between them is that attainable housing is for up to four units, and the residential housing is for more than four units. And I never can remember the difference, so they should have named them something more specific so I could remember it more easily. So these are for, only for rentals. It's not for owner-occupied, and there has to be an income qualification. And then what the result is, is that the, the rent cannot be more than 30% of adjusted household income, which is a defined term in both of the acts. So there's some math involved to, to come up with what is the, the household income under the acts, and then the 30% applies to that. It's a pretty straightforward process to implement these. The steps are not anything that you would be unfamiliar with. We'd have to let the county know what we were up to and have a public hearing so that the public is aware. And then the city commission would adopt a resolution to establish the housing district. So there is sort of a, you know, a bubble that you pick. And like Susan indicated, it could be an area of the city that you think is underserved, or it could be some other reason, and, and we could talk that through. And then, once you adopt that resolution, you provide it to the county and so that they know where the housing district is located. And then there's some back and forth between different departments, sort of communication between the clerk and the assessor. You get public notice again, and then you have another public hearing on the district. And then, once that has been approved, then the state tax commission is notified that that has, has occurred. And if, whether it is approved or disapproved, you have to provide the reasons for that decision. So the end result of all of this, once you've established the boundaries of the district, is that there can be, upon application, a 50% reduction in the property taxes for that particular property that's being leased to income-qualified folks based on their adjusted household income. And that can go for up to 12 years, and it provides options for folks up to 120% AMI. So it's not really a super complicated process. So, but if, if it's something the commission and the planning commission is interested in, then I'll work with staff and we'll put the time and effort in to bring that back to you and get that process going. But other than that, I don't have anything else unless there's questions.
Commissioner Stanley?
So looking at this, and maybe this is the same process for pilots, but I'm just curious, if the tax abatement is for 12 years and it's for families up, earning up to 120% AMI, who is responsible? up, earning up to 120% AMI, who is responsible then for ensuring compliance with that over the course of those 12 years?
We work with the assessor and, um, the state tax commission to make sure that we have the, the right, um, process in place to ensure that that's going on. And the statute also provides for, uh, you know, what happens if somebody moves in at a certain household income and then things change for them. You know, that's all addressed in the statute as well. So that would be monitored to make sure.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have one. So my mind, and I might have, this might be outlined somewhere else that I've forgotten. In my mind, I'm thinking of if we did this in an area, would this apply, is it proportional to property for rental? So like someone built an ADU with the intention of renting to teachers, for example, who might meet this 120 AMI, would that be applicable to that portion of the property? Cause I know that changes, that if you add, do an addition like that, it changes the taxable value. Would that be proportional in that way or does it have to be an entire lot and building?
That's a great question, and I think that I would, um, have to work with the assessor on that because there are different things that she can do to, um, you know, split the property into different sections for the rental and so forth, and then to make sure, um, with the tax commission that that is something that they're aware of. And those are great questions. I don't know the answers to, but I can, I can get them.
Okay. Other questions? Go ahead, Anna. Oh, and then Anna, then Heather, sorry. Anna, then Heather, sorry. You both put your hands up at the same time. I just don't have that order.
Is this typically done like by way of district or smaller than a zoning district? Like I'm trying to envision it on a map and I don't know how you do that without like spot zoning or kind of getting into that realm.
It's not zoning, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't be spot zoning, but I understand what you're talking about. I don't know if there's a way to say what's typically done. The only one I'm aware of that's been done is Frankfurt. So that would be a good resource to reach out to, I think, and understand what their process was like. But I, I wouldn't be worried about sort of the spot zoning aspect of it.
So we would basically, we could be consulted, but the, this would entirely originate and be withheld by the city commission.
Correct, correct. It's a city, it's a commission based process. Yep.
Great. Heather, go ahead.
And my question was basically the same as Anna. How do you, my question was basically the same as Anna's, how do you define a district? Is it one lot? Is it a whole block, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, right. That's the conversation that you'd, that the commission would have to, you know, delve into where they think it's appropriate, where it's needed.
Well, that's a question I have for a lot of the programs that have been presented tonight, and that is, you know, is it, does the city, should the city be initiating these, recruiting applicants, looking for places? Or is it something that you just try to advertise that it's out there and available and bring your stuff to us? And there's a lot of expertise in here and I'm sure there's a lot of people who've seen how it works. I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but I think it'd be good feedback to get, uh, you know, going forward.
Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, also not looking for an answer tonight, but if you delve into this more and are bringing information back, if you could provide even just a summary, like side by side of, like why one of these programs instead of the pilot or why the pilots, like advantage and disadvantages of the different options.
Your writing. If I, if I can add a little context, so in Frankfurt, I'm pretty sure that they designated the entire city as an attainable housing district. So the only ones who benefit is someone who's building a new rental unit and is willing to income control that unit and do the annual compliance. So if the, if a goal is to incentivize more people to, and I will tell you as, you know, small investor, like I can't build something and rent it at, you know, at an attainable price because my costs are just too high between the construction and the taxes. So as much as I, like I work for housing, I work for housing ever since, advocacy organization. So, um, so that might be something to consider is, you know, if, if that is a goal and you want the market to, you know, the small investor, the homeowner to solve, try to solve this problem, you know, not everyone's going to do it. Not everyone's going to do it, but that would be a way to reduce those operating costs in the first six to 12 years of operation. And then it goes to, you know, then the taxes revert to just being regular market rate. I feel like there's another question I wanted to address.
Just a question for Lauren really quick and then kind of help direct the body here. Lauren, is this the only one that is strictly with the city commission? Everything else would have to, or could or should originate with the planning commission as we would move it through the system? And I'm saying this for input, if this is the only one that's city commission exclusive, I would poll my commissioners right now and see where they're at and then open up the broader conversation about all the other tools we were just presented on. But if there's other ones, then, you know, I'd be curious.
Well, there's a whole lot, you know, to be, to be honest, there's so much that was covered that I'm not an expert in.
Okay.
I would defer to the other speakers if they.
Well, since we know this one for sure, I guess my question, my commissioners, the city commissioners would be, I've heard some questions about, you know, how does this stack up against pilots, some interest? Would we like to instruct Lauren as staff to look into what the rules, you know, kind of essentially what the rules would be for us to do this in Traverse City, what that might look like compared to other programs so we can have a further discussion of this later and continue to, to work on that process? Is that kind of head nods or no's or any, I'm seeing head nod, head nod, head nod, head nod, head nod. Okay.
What's the consequence of 50% loss of?
That would definitely be part of the conversation. Yes. So, um, so Lauren, we'll kind of give you that general direction of kind of going to see what that might look like for us. Would it, you know, Frankfurt did citywide, if we, what it would look like if we did by neighborhoods? What does that look like to lose 50%? Could it be parson, or I can't talk tonight, sorry, portioned out on parcels? If it was a, like an ADU without, next to a permanent dwelling? So just some of that information to bring back to us and we will continue that part of the discussion at the city commission level. And now seeing that yeses, I'm going to just go ahead and say that to you and give you that marching order.
To try and bring you back something you can have a deeper conversation about.
Great, thank you. And then everybody else, I'm now opening up the floor. We've had a couple of tools presented to us. One of the goals of having this conversation together was to find out what the interest is between both the planning commission and the city commission in these tools and exploring more. These are not, this is not a commitment. This is not a guarantee to anybody who might be interested in these fundings that we would eventually offer them. It would be what are we interested in having, learning more about and having discussions about how it might fit into the city? And so if anybody feels very passionate, uh, jump ahead or I might just start polling people yes or no's or anything. Or are we all slightly brain mushed and need to think about this a little more? Go ahead, Brian.
I mean, there's a lot of programs presented very quickly. So, I mean, and it's a lot to take in. I really think it's, you know, it's a question of, again, going back and asking, you know, some of the presenters tonight, uh, I mean, some programs are ultra, you know, competitive. You know, we've seen, I know that, you know, the city has seen projects take years to get funding or approval. I don't know if there's other projects that are out there that are a little less tapped or a little less unknown. I don't know if there's anything that's not ultra competitive when it comes to getting, you know, funding for housing. You know, but it's really, I think it's just a question of figuring out how not just us, but also our surrounding community can actually target and recruit and maybe advance some of these because it's, and I'm not on the commission anymore, so I've been away from it a while. But my feeling was always that except for a limited number of projects, it's always someone bringing something to us. And I don't know if there's an advantage in us trying to go out and be more aggressive. And I, aggressive is the wrong.
How active?
Yeah, just, yeah, just being more active, you know, and trying to attract different investment from different sectors. So, but that's a question I think you're going to have to have, you know, is not going to get answered here tonight, but it's one worth pursuing.
For sure. Go ahead.
Yeah, going off of that and putting on my planning commissioner hat, though behind this desk today, I'm wearing both. I see it as a chance to learn about the tools so that if a development project comes forward and a developer is thinking about using something, then we know what they're talking about. But also it is an opportunity for us to be more educated going forward. If we had some portion of town that was going to be significantly redeveloped, like we had a former large factory that closed and was now abandoned and had reverted to city ownership, then it would be certainly worth, uh, seeing how we wanted to use planning, zoning, various economic development tools to turn that from an abandoned tissue paper plant like they had in Sheboygan and redevelop that to housing, to commercial, to other uses that served our community. We've seen some redevelopments in parts of town. We have three development districts, uh, created in our planning map for three distinct parts of town that had been former industrial sites of one form or other that then got redeveloped to midtown condos or to, um, new development along Eighth Street here or in the warehouse district. Uh, but we don't really have a large, um, brownfield site equivalent to that at present. That doesn't mean something might not emerge in the future. And if I look at, um, say our corridor plans and what the, uh, planning commission has in its future, if we're talking about rebuilding the 14th street road in 2028 and looking at what we want that corridor to look and feel like, there could be opportunities along that area. If we're saying, hey, this is a major corridor, we are rebuilding it, how do we want to match what the local residents and the city as a whole wants along that area?
Other, go ahead, Jackie.
I, I would be very interested in, um, hearing more from Sarah Lucas. You know, we've talked earlier today about, um, regional collaboration and it seems as though perhaps her office might be able to provide resources or guidance on how we could establish regional collaborations on housing. So, um, I'd, I'd like to have more conversation about that.
That's great. We could definitely put out as per the kind of what Brian marked on too as well, like asking for some feedback later of analyzing that through Traverse City and opening that conversation more. That is a very good one. Go ahead, Anna.
I feel like it's been, I mean, I've been on the planning commission for years now and I hear what Brian is saying and maybe it's time to try something new. We are always receiving projects. There are lots of underutilized properties, not lots. There are some, um, remaining. There are some lots there, like parking lots. There are some just vacant holes in the ground. There are places that we could become a little creative with and maybe those are the spaces that we put NEZs, where they're already sitting, um, empty and underutilized. And I just think that is a way to try to create some sustainable growth, um, that we have some input over. If we don't, if we entirely let the market decide, I'm, I'm pretty jaded at this point. I believe that it'll continue to just be investment opportunities and we'll continue to see short-term rentals, uh, saturate the market. So like where do we try to combat parts of that? And some of these tools are a few of those options, I believe.
Go ahead, Maxwell.
Yeah. I, I would just say having this discussion about some of these, uh, these incentives are, it is a really great conversation. And thinking about, uh, what some of the, the townships are doing, um, thinking about East Bay Township, they have a, a project going through approval utilizing both Brownfield TIF and, uh, PA 237 abatement. And so a lot of these incentives can, can work in concert with one another, you know, and every project is, is different. Another project that comes to mind, uh, they are utilizing Lytech, no, I'm sorry, it's a, they have a pilot and, um, looking at utilizing, uh, funds from, uh, the Brownfield revolving loan fund potentially to support that project. So I guess keeping in mind that the, if the goal is attainable, affordable housing, a lot of these things may have to work in conjunction with each other to, to realize that goal within the community, so.
Excellent point. I would say, I would add to this, I appreciate both Brian and Anna's perspectives of, you know, kind of the experts, the people who want to develop or have identified the property can know, you know, are the ones that want to do the legwork of figuring out how all the pieces will fit together. To Anna's point, that hasn't always yielded us, um, you know, it's a, it's a burden to put on to a, uh, someone who's trying to develop housing in an area where we desperately need housing. I think what I'm, things I'm appreciating about this conversation, which isn't giving much direction, but I'm just putting it out there, is in the past, we, I remember a few years ago, we had some, a developer come and propose an NEZ to us in an area that still has not been developed. And it was, um, kind of every time that, I think the importance of this conversation is to say that every time a developer does come to us with something like this or some other, um, idea, a plan that fits into some of these components, there is, has been a tendency to vilify as this is just for developers' personal gain or this is for profit. And that is a balance we have to strike when these come before us. But I think what we have to talk about, part of this conversation and part of the continuing conversations from this will be, you know, is that at the end of the day, what we have to do to not have a hole in the ground is get a portion of affordable housing included with something that might give a bit of a tax break to a $500,000 condo? And at the end of the day, that'll be the body's decisions to decide that that is an absolute no-go or that's a trade-off we're willing to do or, and that's an example. It's not, that's off the top of my head, that is not a hard example I want to clarify. And so that, I think this helps to put into context some of these tools that we have intended to get presented to us in the past as part of a presentation by a developer or by a group that had a special interest versus having a kind of broader knowledge of what is available for us. And I, so I appreciate this conversation. I know there will be other conversations, but at both levels, both as options might be brought to us and potentially as we have kind of more exploration, as people get coffee with people like Susan or have a chat with Tony, that these might open up some more conversations and more ideas stirring. But that was the intention of this, was to really have a literal study session where we all got to study together, get the information together and kind of start on the same page. So I, I guess with that, I want to take a moment and open up to public comment and then I will definitely come back after public comment for more, for more comment from the boards, but I just wanted to give everybody a minute to digest to and think about that question a little bit more. So with that, I will open up public comment and Sarah does have a mic to read the rules.
Oh, no, you gave me a mic. We ask that you state your name and address, indicate if you are a city resident, non-city resident and/or a city business owner. We have a three-minute time allotment per speaker. When your time is elapsed, the timer will beep, which is my laptop. And finally, we request that all language be respectful to all parties.
So at this time, anybody who'd like to make a comment on any of these items about the housing discussion in general or anything else? John, I see you're sitting there, but you were asking questions in the middle of it. It can be questions too that we will try to find the answers to after, afterwards. We don't do an exchange of ideas during public comment. You get your three minutes and then we can answer if we have the answer on site right now, but as this is a much larger conversation, it also would be something we could kind of file away and have staff follow up on. So John, thank you for taking the bait.
And I don't need the whole three minutes, I guarantee you. I just had some questions when Tony was speaking. He mentioned all those great grant programs and what Mishna's doing, but throughout the whole thing, I didn't hear anything about home funds. And we've got projects in Traverse City that have benefited from home funds. The first one I did on Eighth Street was 900,000 in home funds and 300,000 in tax exempt bond financing. I mean, what a beautiful, you know, thing to have. It's always like six units, but we have five, four units at 60% AMI, two units at 50. That's powerful. So I don't know if he's going to interact, but I can talk.
Later.
And then, um, NEZs I think are the spot-on idea. The Depot neighborhood comes to mind. That came and went. Where are the rest of NEZs? Maybe any vacant city-owned property should be automatically an NEZ zone and come and get it. Just a thought. And then blending, you're talking about TIFs, we're talking about pilots, but you put the two together, you know, if you give us a. two together, you know, if you give us a 0% pilot, there's no extra tax revenue coming off the property, right? But you give us a four or a six, well, I would take that 4% or 6% and apply it to a TIF and put those two together. So just some thoughts. Maybe that'll get some responses. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Any other public comment at this time? And you did stay under the time, so hold on. Go ahead, Susan.
Susan Lighthouse, again. And I just wanted to give a little context on the attainable housing that Lauren presented. So a key differentiator is that the, between the pilot that has been widely used, and that's great, and you've gotten some great results with multifamily, you know, larger multifamily projects. The small, the homeowner who wants to add one unit cannot use that program because the compliance costs, that third-party compliance and the required audit is cost prohibitive for that homeowner who's doing one unit. Attainable housing, my hope would be that there could be a simple, low-cost, annual compliance method developed that would be within the control of the commissions and staff. So that could be, right now, there's nothing for that homeowner that wants to do one unit or two units or three units. So attainable housing would be the one.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, thank you for that. And then I'll bring it back. We've all chewed on it, we've heard, yes, any more comments?
Yeah, just one, so the attainable housing district could be for a residential homeowner who wants to add an ADU. Well, let's go for it.
Yeah.
My, on top of that, my thought was, what if it's a really, really large house that is becoming too much upkeep for a single person, and they want to split it into a duplex or a triplex? Would that, that would qualify as well, then.
Lauren's nodding her head from her seat, but no, she hasn't.
Oh, thank you, Lauren.
I wasn't going to make you get up, you have more to say.
It's up to four units, and then the other one is more than four units.
Okay, great.
So it could be six.
Yeah, or it could be a duplex with an ADU or a triplex and an ADU, yeah.
We're hearing a lot. Oh. Sorry, I kind of closed down public comment, but there was kind of a blur, so I'll go ahead and let.
But did you?
Yeah, you can, I'll go ahead and let you go. We're kind of a little.
Ken Funk, 1125 Hannah Avenue, city resident, city employee, city commission candidate. I just wanted to ask a quick question about the ADU, and I guess we'll use this format for it. Is utilizing ADHD only for specific occupations discrimination? Like if, if I said, I want to build this for, you know, single people or?
Direct the comments to the commission, because we'll have somebody come up at the end.
Yeah.
And we'll have people answer questions at the end, both from the commission and from anything brought up during public comment.
I guess as a general question, then, is utilizing it with specific intention for specific types of people discrimination in nature? So that'd be a question for our fair housing people. Is the tax abatement for the ADHD only in effect when it's occupied by someone? So if we're, we have a citywide ADHD zone for ADUs, do I have to have somebody occupying it to get the 50%? Or is it an opportunity for me to get a 50% tax abatement on the square footage above my garage because the ADU is there? So just kind of one of those questions. And does it open somebody up for the ability to use like a housing voucher? And do I have to let someone use a housing voucher if it's there and it's getting the tax abatement? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll do a last call for public comment since we bent the rules a little there. Anybody else want to make any public comment? And can, it can be questions that we will add to the list of, the laundry list that we're sending to staff right now. Okay, seeing none, public comment is officially closed. Heather has a great question there. We've got some other questions, especially towards, really quickly before I have our housing authority answer that last question, some questions about the uses of the, or the ADUs and how that qualifies. Are there other questions up here? Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, to add on to my earlier question for the city attorney, based on the comments that Susan just made, as far as essentially the annual costs, so wondering, under the city's pilot policy, because we had discussions about this previously, that I think in theory it could be applied to a single rental unit, but the cost to administer it might be so prohibitive. So as you put together pros and cons, that's a huge thing to understand, like what it, what it is. So maybe how many units then disperses that cost and it becomes less cost prohibitive? Thanks.
Great. Any other questions or requests?
I just want to know from staff, what do you need from us tonight?
Really quick, I was going to have her answer the question.
This is a good starting point, is this discussion. First, we wanted to inform you about these tools and make sure that both bodies were fully aware of that. But then, just some direction. I know I'm hearing a lot of questions, which is great. We know direction starts at a starting point, and sometimes you need more information. That's fantastic. I think there are opportunities for both bodies to play a role in this. After all, the Planning Commission is the body tasked by the state to examine land use issues and make recommendations. So three of these tools today do require a district, which is related to land use and where you want to see more housing. That's an opportunity where the Planning Commission could use their expertise to make a recommendation of where these tools could be used, once identified by the City Commission, which ones they would or could potentially support, as Amy said. No commitments are made today. We don't know until a final vote is there what direction things will go. But I have heard from Planning Commissioners, too, there hasn't been a lot of direction, except we want more housing. And so we all know that we need more housing, but how do we want to address that? And of course, we have to act within the rules of fair housing, within the tools enabled to us from the state, within the funding that our partners can provide and stuff. So as we've heard today, it's complex, right? It takes a lot of layering. One thing I would recommend, I mean, I will say, let me back up. Susan has hosted a couple ADU panel discussions in the community that I've been part of, and we've heard this a lot, that we have residents who want to be part of the solution. They would love to build an ADU. They could probably swing the ADU. It's the taxes for the rest of their life that's going to hurt them. So if we can help soften that, we can help open the door. So we're not just using public tax money all the time, we are allowing people to invest in their community and be part of their future. And there are concerns about, you know, what's that taxation going to be? I'm glad that we're asking that, and we should think about that with pilots, too, as we hand them out long-term. But I would say, from what we're hearing, as far as the attainable facilities, so that's a small scale for less, most of this would be materialized on new construction that people are wanting to build if they can get over that tax barrier. So it's not really a reduction in taxes, it's just not as big of an increase as you might see. But that's that trade-off, right? At the same time, it's not taking us any public money to build that housing, you know, we're not having to invest in it. So those are some of the things that we're looking for today, just kind of getting that direction so that we know what to start pulling together, and we're not just spinning our wheels, but we want to be efficient with this. We know the community need is strong, and we just appreciate the discussion.
So Sean, just to clarify, you're looking for direction from the City Commission on which of these tools the Planning Commission should explore further beyond what they've indicated regarding the attainable housing piece, right?
Yep, yep. So, you know, I'd like to go to that question. I think Brian was discussing, and Anna hit on a little bit, too, there's different ways you can approach this, right? You can wait and ask for developers. I will tell you, or wait for developers to ask you to implement the tools, or even take a different approach and be proactive and signal to the developers where you want that kind of stuff. From my experience, they respond better to the latter, because time is money and they like a predictable process. So if they know that's already in place, they'll start to pursue that because they are looking for those tools. I'll be honest, there's really not much money to be made in building housing. That's why we're seeing it struggle so much, as Susan mentioned, and stuff like that. The cost of labor and lumber is just getting really, really hard out there. So every little bit helps. There is no magic panacea that'll fix it, but that's where we're kind of going.
Great. With that, does anyone now have something they want to explore? Go ahead, Heather.
Yeah, I would start with the attainable housing district and residential housing, because it's really made for people who already live here, who may want to stay in their homes. The NEZ is a great idea, but that seems like it's something that, it either originates from a grand idea from the Planning Commission about like Fourteenth Street or from a developer. So I kind of wait and see on that one. But I would get started at least answering these questions, because the burden on the tax department might be huge, as Commissioner Warner pointed out, all these individual, individuals with these different tax statements coming out, so.
So to clarify, we did already instruct, and just because we've had a big discussion now, we did already instruct Lauren to look in more into the attainable housing and residential housing and what that might require and bring that back to us. So that is in process as of right now. So these other ones, I think it's coming down to a philosophical discussion, and maybe this is one that we revisit, or if people have, want to weigh in right now with a quick take, you know, do we want to have the Planning Commission start looking at areas that, maybe it is Fourteenth Street, could be identified for some of these and explore what might fit for them? Or is this, is it more kind of, as it was discussed, that the developers, what's actually available and what's out there? So, Brian, you've got your hand up, though.
Yeah, so you've got me thinking now, and some of the people have said is, and we may not be able to like pick an NEZ, you know, neighborhood enterprise zone, but, you know, I guess for myself and the Planning Commission, I'd like to know if there's any of this stuff, the, you know, the City Commission is like, we don't want to do that.
Fair question.
Because part of it is also having the process in place for when people come to you so they know what to expect.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of trying to build the process around a project. And so they know that, you know, maybe somebody says, yeah, we've got an NEZ program, process, ordinance, whatever we need, and you could put it here, we would like to put it here, and then we can look and say, it fits there. Or no, it doesn't, because it doesn't meet these, most likely it's going to be half of one, you know, six of the other.
I just want to, if I may jump in and just say, I really support that comment, and Mr. Winter said that it does, it's more compelling for developers, those that would build housing, to know exactly what's available to them, and for the city to have a package, like an application package or informational materials that make it really clear on what to expect regarding the process. So I would strongly encourage us being proactive in that regard, if that's one way to put it.
You could develop like a messaging tool, like a simple one-pager that kind of instructs people how, and how they can build their ADUs, or how they, what all's going to be involved if they decide they want to increase the housing need, or the housing supply? Because Sean mentioned that at some of the listening sessions, they're getting those kinds of questions. So then we could have like a city-sponsored messaging that kind of helps with that.
Yeah. I'm not hearing a request to really explore anything at this point beyond the attainable housing facility, is that correct?
That's, go ahead, mine.
I will not be here after the end of October. And also, I guess I'm knowing that we've had a request for an NEZ come before the City Commission, and there is that reactivity to a developer coming and asking for a tax abatement, what the harm would be in exploring what it could look like and where those could go, so that, to your point, that they're being, that developers are directed to, if you want this incentive, this is where we envision them fitting, our city, as we are looking to develop these corridors and areas.
Yeah, going off of that, when we had the NEZ discussion, it was a new tool for this body, and it was a lot of staff time to figure out how well it could potentially work. If we can maybe not do a comprehensive search of the entire city, but identify some areas where it is much more workable, then that staff time is already done, or both us, and it is easier for the developer.
This is where I would go, though, and say to Commissioner Stanley's point about her remaining time on the Commission and a couple of others, that what happened when the NEZ came back to us, I remember that conversation, was also, though, NEZ at the time, and maybe there's been changes, wasn't limited to only attainable, or to only affordable housing rates. And so the issue also in the pushback there was that it was seen as getting a development or a discount or an abatement to how it was presented to market rate housing. And so I think that that is where we can say, here's where we'd love to see it, but the seven people that will be up here in a couple of months, in two months, are going to ultimately decide if that's their finger to the wind of what they want to instruct staff on. We could instruct staff for the next month, they could come back in six weeks, eight weeks, and present to a different, potentially very different commission and get a very different response. That's my hesitation on the NEZ exploration or picking up property right now. Not that we shouldn't have more, I mean, I appreciate that having all of this before us. And so I guess I would ask Susan right now, you know, if that, what, the NEZ is, for the one that qualifies for us, sorry, I'm going back because there's the new in there, but, yeah, can you approach the mic? Yeah, that is now limited then to within that range, right, of, there's a, there's a cap, and there's a requirement to the tax abatement specifically, correct?
Truly, you can establish the district anywhere you'd like, but I think the best use, or the, and where I've seen it used, is if there's a property that's been vacant for a long time, it's because the developer can't make the numbers work to turn it into something productive. I think that's where you would want to look to utilize. The NEZ rehab in particular, and I guess NEZ new, just it's new construction, but it would go alongside, like, why has that property been vacant? It's because the numbers don't work without some sort of incentive.
It was used for the Depot neighborhood here in Traverse City.
Yes. So, no, I understand, yes, thank you for that clarifying point. I guess that's where, go ahead, Tim, yeah.
Well, it ties back, I think, or at least in my mind, to Commissioner Stanley's comment and how it, there were too many concerns when the developer brought the NEZ to us before. So at the same time that maybe somebody is identifying a vacant property, which I like what Susan's saying, there should be thought put into it before there's a developer as to what will be asked of the developer to show that the benefit of the NEZ in dollars didn't just go in the developer's pocket. Like, could they show without an NEZ, this is how it pencils out, and with the NEZ, this is how it pencils out? And to show, yeah, maybe they've got some skin in the game, too. It's not just the NEZ. You know, say they make, they like to make 25% on whatever they do. So they make 25% without the NEZ, but now they can make 25% on this vacant property that's been sitting there because there's the NEZ.
Mm-hmm.
But maybe for us and the public, they need to be making, I'll make up a number, 20% on this for a body to say, okay, we'll talk about it more. Somehow they're involved.
So that's the request you would have to bring back for a conversation? That broader, not those exact numbers, yeah.
Yeah, for people to consider that aspect.
Yes.
So that a future commission isn't in the same position where a developer comes forward, even if the city's identified the property, and then it's like, oh, no, we don't want to be just giving money to a developer. So what can the developer say that convinces a body and the public that we're not just giving money to a developer?
Okay, so is that something, go ahead, Jackie.
Just a reminder that I think Commissioner Warner had asked for a summary of each of the tools with pros, cons, and implications. That would be, for me, a very appropriate next step and would be helpful for the people who are sitting here now, as well as people who will be sitting here in November. So maybe that's a good use of staff time to give us a high-level summary.
That seems like a good request for across the board. Great. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing as we're kind of talking about that. You know, the attainable housing and the residential housing can be applied broadly to like an entire city and stuff like that. The NEZ has to be more targeted. It can't exceed 15%. But in today's first City Commission study session, there was a lot of discussion about utilizing soft power to influence and things like that. NEZs are a great tool for that. Put the incentives in place in the targeted properties where you don't want them to stay a dusty parking lot into the next generation. As Susan had pointed out, a lot of times they're there just because they can't make the numbers work. And if the tools aren't there for them to consider when they're running their pro forma, they're probably not going to get to that solution. So just kind of keep that in mind, that you can be very targeted with NEZs, more so than some of these other tools that you've talked about.
Great. Good point. So I think the next request that I think that seems to be, meeting the consensus, is a staff pro-con and numbers, rough numbers to each of these tools to see what that would look like in application here. I think that could be shared both at the Planning Commission and City Commission level for each body to have that information.
Yes, yeah.
Any other requests at this? Any other requests at this time? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to now, well, I'll ask, well, we've asked twice now if staff, what staff needs, I think we've given it. So I will now open for general public comment. This can be about anything, it does not have to be about housing or any of these tools. Does anybody want to make any general public comment?
So I just wanted to say, you know, developers have reasons for developing, right? They want to make a profit, they want to, they want 25, 30%. That's why some of these don't work. You have a nonprofit here in Traverse City, it's called Homestretch. If you have a project, come to your local nonprofit, as long as we get our salaries paid and our office is in the building, we'll help you put a project together like Lotto. And I just can't say enough, come to us or, you know, use us to the best that you can. All right, thanks.
Thanks John. Any other general public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to the body then and that's all she wrote for tonight with our joint session. So the meeting is adjourned and have a good night, everybody.